I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Crapp?
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, and communications, and reports. This evening, we have two. The first one, we're going to have a presentation from our state representative, Mr. William Sowerby. So if you'd like to come forth.
Hello, everyone, and city commissioners. Through the chair, how much time would you like me to take here?
Um.
I'm a politician, so.
We'll cut you off, just go right ahead.
And if the forum allows, I'm happy to answer questions if this portion allows it. So I'm your state rep from District 31, and the committees I serve in Lansing are the Natural Resources Committee, I also serve on Education Committee, and I also serve on the Judiciary Committee. It's been quite a busy year already. We've had 395 total votes on the floor, and of which, a total of 80 votes, I did vote no on. Some of the most more significant legislation that took place this year so far, the one was the no-fault insurance issue. And that has certainly dear to all of our hearts. The legislation did fail, and failed rather significantly, and with a significant number of Republicans voting no, along with most all of the Democrats, other than four, voting no. The issue basically was about the fact that the bill as it was before us ended up being a flawed bill. It didn't address the ZIP code issue, it didn't address other discriminatory issues, such as persons' credit scores, whether they're married or not, things of that sort, which also has driven up the rates, things you don't see in other states, but allowed here in Michigan. Some of the other issues with that bill was that there was not any kind of measure of taking into account the catastrophic care fund, and the accountability of that. We know that fund is in the billions and billions of dollars, but nobody knows for sure, and nobody knows how to get their hand around it. So what there is, is a series of bills that were introduced, bipartisan bills, and so we're hoping that these bipartisan bills will be taken up in the coming year, and that we can have real no-fault reform happen here in Michigan, protect our persons who are injured, but also help to lower rates in a matter-of-fact way. The other significant bill that we voted on, it was the very first bill, that we voted on, I got introduced to what a late-night session would be. It went on till almost 2:00 in the morning, that very first full session, but it was the income tax bill. And the income tax bill was going to roll back the state income tax significantly, but did not replace the lost revenue that was so important to cities like Mount Clemens and all cities and townships across the state, along with numerous services and other things, such as education, how we repair our roads, all these things. None of that was taken into consideration. That bill did fail as well, and otherwise, had it passed, there might have been significant cuts to, you know, a lot of our municipalities, amongst other things. So that was significant early on. But we certainly did have good bills that were introduced, and certainly will help this state, help our county, and help this city. One of those bills was the Good Jobs Bill, and this was a way of attracting large companies to come into the state, giving them certain tax incentives for the number of employees that they hired, and the length of time those employees stayed on. This was a significant bill that did pass quite well in the House. We also had the bill that had to deal with brownfield developments. And there are many places in our state where there needs to be redevelopment. One of those here in Macomb County is Lakeside Mall, and there's a lot of talk about the future of that. This brownfield development will help to refurbish old antiquated areas of our state and our cities, and that new, once those are taken down, new development can come in and spur new growth. Another significant bill that was taken up was the FOIA bill earlier this year. It passed unanimously in the House. Many people don't realize that, you know, as you know, you're a city, you're responsible for answering all FOIAs, Attorney Murray can answer that, and all the requests that you may get in. Every city, every township in this state is required to follow FOIA and answer it, but the state legislature and the state government is not. And that's wrong. You need that kind of transparency. The House passed unanimously FOIA bills that were going to address that issue, but they've languished in the Senate. We're hoping that they will take that up next year. And, you know, there's a lot of significant issues happening in Education Committee that we continue to work on. As we know dearly, in Mount Clemens, Mount Clemens Schools has certainly struggled over the years, and one of our schools amongst many in the state that are on the distress list, but there's been some very good things happening in the city of Mount Clemens Schools, and likewise throughout the state. We continue to work with our Department of Education and Mr. Wiston, the superintendent, to continue to right the ship. I believe, as an Education Committee member, we still don't fund our school districts, our traditional public school districts, well enough. That has to be addressed, because our future is there in education. So that pretty much wraps some of it up. I'm happy, if I'm allowed, to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Fournier?
Are you taking up the no-fault insurance issue again, or soon?
Great question.
Because I think it is a very important issue for the state, and for us, even as a city.
Very important. So the bill that was introduced was known as the Duggan Bill. It had only one legislative sponsor, and that was Speaker Tom Leonard of the House. No other names were signed on to that bill, and so it failed. There is, as I said, this bipartisan, it's a series of bills, that are addressing all the issues that were not addressed in the Duggan Bill, and that has to get a hearing, but that is controlled by the Speaker of the House, Tom Leonard, and the chairperson of the Insurance Committee, Representative Weiss, and so they have to take that up. We continue to lobby them, both sides of the aisle, to move that issue, and we're hoping that they will. So we're hoping that there will be good results, probably likely, next year. The big issue that we're going to be focusing on over the next couple of weeks, you've all heard, is the pension reform issue. And that is a huge, huge issue. We will be voting on that in the next couple of weeks, and it affects every city and township in this state, and they've put some harsh measures in there, and I believe they are taking the democratic process out of that, and they're forcing emergency manager-type of agendas with appointed commissions to come in and quote-unquote, as they put it, "right the ship," when really, you're all elected, and that's what our residents expect. I went through that when I was a treasurer in Clinton Township, making sure that these things were funded, but we had to figure out the ways, as you all do. And so we're pushing back on that issue, but I feel personally that this is an affront if you're forcing the state to come in, or the state is forcing this commission to come in and take over your pension benefits and your retiree healthcare benefits.
Bill, why are they? I mean, what does the state have to gain from this? I mean, this is the municipalities. Why are they even getting involved in it? I mean, to me, it's going to be a mandate, they're going to shove down our throats. And what do they gain from it? I mean, what does the state gain?
What I've heard is, is the state feels that if these aren't addressed, then the state will have this burden of having to take these issues on and be responsible for them, which I don't believe is the case. So as a result, they've got this measure where if you are 40% or less funded in your retiree healthcare, they can step in to try to take dollars from other areas of the budget and put it in there to better fund it. And if your pension system, and you have a very successful pension system.
We do.
But if you're funded under 60%, then they can step in with this commission and do that. They will set up parameters as to how you have to fund it, and if you live up to that measure, and there's all kinds of accounting of that over a matter of months, if you continue to follow that, they won't step in, they say. But there's a whole lot of leeway here for the state to step in and take over. It's just another way of big government stepping in and tramping on the rights of the voters and the elected officials.
Vote no.
Yeah, that's what, yes.
Vote no. Denise Henn.
So, on the pension reform, I find it completely egregious that the state of Michigan is going to violate union bargain contracts for our first responders. These are people that put their lives on the line for us every day. There might not be a failure every day, but when there is, they put their life on the line. There may not be, you know, an automobile chase and an armed gunman every day, but our sheriff department puts their life on the line every day, and I find it completely egregious and unacceptable, and quite frankly, downright dastardly, to use an unswear word, that they're even considering this. I just, I am shocked and dismayed by this. And this takes me back also to the repeal and rollback request from Brandenburg and Lucido for the state income tax with no provision, no provision, to replace that money to our cities, villages, and townships and our schools. These are your Republicans at work, darn it! And I am just appalled at how Lansing is running some of this stuff right now.
Is there a question?
And I think.
I am just curious, is there a question for?
And I'm just going to say, I thank you for being there to help bring some common sense. So that, my question is, can you bring more common sense up there? Thank you.
Thank you, and it does take bipartisanship on a lot of these bills, and on the OPEB issue, it will take bipartisanship, and we are hoping that both sides of the aisle will have significant votes against this.
I actually, I do have a question. We, the state of Michigan obviously is having a difficult time coming up with funding options or funding.
Resources.
Magic wands, to figure out how to fix the roads. But in our community, we're having a difficult time, because we keep getting cut in terms of funding from the state, to fix our roads, our local street funds, and they offer grants that our, Mr. Wood always goes and finds for us, but nothing ever seems to cover local street funds. And so that makes it really difficult for us in terms of big projects that we need to complete. And so, is there any type of funding that the state can work on? Is there anything in the pipeline that's going to change that in terms of local streets?
The short answer, right now, is no.
Yeah, I'm afraid of it.
And when the state budget was brought forward for a vote, I did vote no on it, and I voted no, because it didn't provide any new dollars for state revenue sharing, for infrastructure, for those important things, and I don't see it changing at all next year. And it is a very serious concern, and as you all know, when you talk to your constituents, and I know well myself, that one of the number-one issues that our constituents have is, what are you doing about the infrastructure? And we're tired of our cars being beat up, and our bodies being beat up every time we go down certain roads. So we continue to push for these issues and those dollars, but it doesn't look good right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next presentation we have is a proclamation to Lois Hill for her service to the City Commission. So I get the honors. So with me, Mrs. Long. Guess what else I get for you? Last check. Can you hear me all right, Patrick? All right. Whereas the people of Mount Clemens, through their duly elected officials, have a long history of recognizing those individuals in their midst who have given themselves for the human and public good. And whereas, after 12 years of public service as a city commissioner on the Mount Clemens City Commission, Lois Hill has chosen to not seek reelection. And Lois Hill was first elected to the City Commission November 2005, and was successfully reelected in November 2009, and was successful in her write-in campaign November 2013. And from the November, from November 2011 to November 2013, and again, from November 2016, until just recently, Lois served in the role as mayor pro temp, assuming the official capacity in the absence of the mayor. And during her tenure as an elected representative for the city, Lois was entrusted with the responsibility of evaluating and voting on various issues and concerns that would provide the best possible service to the residents while keeping the city financially responsible. And in addition to her elected service, Lois is a member of the Bath City Association, which works to beautify and preserve the city through various initiatives, and as a member, she helps to coordinate the Christmas walk, an ever-popular holiday tradition in the community. And speaking of Christmas tradition, Lois is a big part of the Mount Clemens Annual Santa Parade, as a parade committee member who organizes and distributes the character costumes for the many volunteers, which in turn brings smiles to many faces along the parade route. And since retiring as a teacher, Lois has continued to guide the paths of students residing in Mount Clemens through her efforts on the Mount Clemens Educational Foundation, which grants scholarships to graduating seniors. And Lois also dedicates her time and talent to the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families, which works to create a safe and healthy community by building and supporting strong families and neighborhoods. And whereas, despite leaving the City Commission, Lois will do, Lois will no doubt continue to be active in the city, giving her time and talents to the community at large. Now therefore, I, Barb Dempsey, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission, and all our citizens, do hereby extend to Lois Hill our appreciation for the efforts she exhibited throughout her 12 years of public service as an elected official for the city of Mount Clemens, and thank her for her dedication to the residents of Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To other people, the proclamation might be kind of a boring thing, but when you're the recipient of one, it means a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Need a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Okay. Public participation. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. Mic is open.
Ruth Redford, 184 Washington. And I just had a question and comment regarding yard waste pickup. I know this is the last week for yard waste, and my trash day was today, so this morning was the last time, for leaf pickup, and my tree in front is still dropping leaves. It was dropping leaves as I was raking after they had picked up already. And a couple other streets, I mean, a couple other trees down the street still have leaves on them. So I had heard on the news that some municipalities were extending the leaf pickup, and I know that in recent years, our falls have been unseasonably warm, and it's been a problem the last two years, and again, it's a problem. Also, there are a lot of leaves in the street, and I haven't seen a street sweeper, and a neighbor is retired, and he's the eyes and ears of our block, and he hasn't seen a street sweeper either. And there's just piles of leaves by the curb. A couple of citizens do clean up their own curbs, but other than that, the leaves just go into the sewers. So I would like to get my leaves off my lawn, but I don't want to store them in my garage.
If we could answer that.
We did get the compost season extended one week, so it is extended through next week as well, so you can put your curbside compost out again through next week. So, and as far as the street sweeper, it is out, just so everyone is aware. It is out, it has been running as nonstop as I can. It's, you know, it's kind of, it doesn't go as, quite as fast as it does in the summer with the amount of leaves that we're picking up and dumping, but it is out, and will continue to be out until everything is cleaned up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. I haven't stayed real in touch with city business, because I've had personal issues with health. I had a couple of phone calls after the organizational meeting. I think first, people, before they want to come up or say anything to the city, I wish people would start just reading the charter. It's at the library. It's not like it's a big, hard thing to do, and of course, the city clerk will always help you if you need it, and find out things for themselves. FYI, when the election is held in November, it's the day after the first meeting, if that's the way the calendar falls. Then the third meeting, or the next meeting is three weeks later, so between, the second Monday in November is when the organizational meeting is held. And if you want to know about it, and there's not very much to it, it's 10.074, Section 45, I believe, in the charter. Not that hard to find. And all it says is, they shall come here and take a little piece of paper and write down names. Of course, you got to know some of the fine points of politics. Usually, there's a lot of talks going on in bathrooms, hallways, telephones, parking lots. We trust that it's no more than three peoples, three members of the commission talking at once, because forum is a quorum, and then that violates open meetings, and so we know. But anyway, as I get it, Mr. Bunton was a unanimous vote?
Yes.
Another member on the commission had seniority, and yes, in the past, seniority has been the basis on which the vote has fallen. However, that's not a rule. That's just been a practice. In addition, another fine point is, there are rules, and there are rules. And it's true in federal, state, and local government, it's not just the city of Mount Clemens. When a rule isn't convenient, and it doesn't serve the prevailing purposes, sometimes we just break the rule. So don't always count on rules to get you what you want, because if it doesn't get the prevailing, or if it doesn't get the current administration and its goals, ain't going to follow the rules. I see the way it is, folks. You don't like it, vote somebody else in. That's up to you, too. That's why when people complain to me about government, I say, "When you point, you got one at them and three back at you. Are you voting?" A lot of times, now, I don't bother anymore. Well, then, whose fault is that? I like to see that we've got Ms. Fournier here. I'm hoping we're breaking the gridlock. I also see that as a reason to have Mr. Bunton, Commissioner Bunton, as mayor pro temp, because I think it gives the mayor a little more of her power back. She's lost her grid, and we're counting on Commissioner, I'm not sure if it's Fournier or Fournier, we're counting on her to remain unbiased, not join either grid, vote what's in the best interest of the citizens, and maybe that's going to kind of like be a one in a row? Okay? And don't let anybody pull you aside and use their political expertise to convert you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Zubas, 221 CAS. I got three things. First, I want to thank Commissioner Campbell for recently talking about 219 CAS. They were having a fire over the summer, and I heard him talk about it, and I walked up to one of the workers and mentioned about him commenting about that. And they thought it was so interesting, that they told the owners of the building, and the owners have worked so much more harder ever since I mentioned this. They tore up a bunch of the sidewalk on their own account and repaired it all. They've hired more crew to work on the outside. They've already finished the outside of the building. So I just want to thank the people who owned 219 CAS for responding to that. The second thing is, I was watching a YouTube video of the last meeting, I didn't catch because I was at work, and I noticed somebody was talking about changing the way this community is run in the government system, and if it is, I hope it stays nonpartisan, because I feel the nonpartisan nature of this present government allows it to be a lot less cluttered with the party politics that are taking over state and the federal legislatures. So if there are changes, please leave it nonpartisan. And the third thing is, I have a suggestion. I really hope that, I'm not sure if it's going to come along too well, but I really think that our city should get trash cans in the near future. I know it sounds weird, but I see, when I'm driving home from a certain facility that I deliver stuff to, I'll go across Clinton Township, and they're pulling up these nice two big old trash cans, one for recycling, one for the regular stuff, and then I'll pull along one of our streets, and I'll see a little kid wheeling out a wagon with all these trash bags in there, and he's hauling them on there one at a time. So I thought it would, if he's hauling them on there one at a time, I'm sure the garbage guy is hauling it in there one at a time, too, which adds more time to their clock sheet, which adds more time to the amount of money that the city has to spend on that. So if we got trash cans, it might reduce a little bit of time spent on that. And also, we'd be able to get full-size recycling cans, too, instead of little bins, which would increase the amount of money that we would get from recycling, instead of just $1,000 that we get a year. That would be a big benefit. And I feel like if we are able to work with GFL, GFL does, their main goal is to take small mom-and-pop shops in Canada and convert them into larger facilities with them, in order to establish what they call environmental synergy. Basically, they're trying to envelop all these environmental services into one house, and I feel like they could do that here in the old Gibraltar Trade Center. I feel like that facility could be a good place for a recycling center, if the IKEA place doesn't work out. I've talked to the CEO, well, the secretary of the CEO, and she seems that he would be interested in the idea, so if an elected official would talk to it, maybe they'd have a lot more leeway in the idea, and we could get something done to where maybe they could have GFL in the city, and they could get rid of the Rizzo stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings?
Move to approve the minutes from the November 20th work session and regular meeting.
Second.
Roll call. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
General Business, 9A. Request approval to enter into an agreement with AT&amp;T for managed phone system services, upgrade data and voice connections, and the new phone equipment. I need a motion.
Move to approve the agreement between the city of Mount Clemens and AT&amp;C for the phone system upgrades and the purchase, connection, and installation of phone equipment.
Support.
The city's current phone system through AT&amp;T was last upgraded in 2003 and is unsustainable. The old technology connections are outdated T1 lines, costly to maintain, and insufficient for consistent operation with today's technological needs. The existing phone equipment consists of refurbished units that have long served their purpose and continue to be a challenge to maintain. The need for a phone system and data connectivity upgrade has been discussed with City Commission with City Commission at several work sessions and has received support to move forward with this capital outlay project at a cost of $49,430. After implementation, which is expected to take three to six months, the city will benefit from an estimated savings of over $34,000 annually. Secure connectivity between city buildings and improved communications. The agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Mensah?
I was wondering if these were VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocols, these phones? Yes. Yes. All righty then.
That was very dramatic.
So, I think that because the county does not appear ready to share services, I think that this is a good idea. I think that the secure connectivity of our phones has been an issue. And I think the upgrading from the T1 lines to VoIP is going to be of immense benefit to the city. And, and I thank you for continuing to push for the betterment of our technological resources here.
Any other questions, comments? See none. RoKaw, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab. Yes. Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. 9B, approve purchase and payments of invoices. Payments of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchase and payment of invoices as presented.
Ford.
Questions? See none. RoKaw, please.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krab. Yes. Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
City managers report.
There was a work session held this evening at 6:00 PM for continued discussion on the state medical marijuana law prior to this commission meeting. The curbside compost pickup season is scheduled to end on Friday, December 15th. Therefore, it has been extended one week. Compost pickup will, will resume the first week of April in 2018. Just a reminder that the deadline to submit nominations for the city's local treasurer award is Friday, December 15th. The purpose of the award is to provide recognition to those who have made the city a better place to live through exceptional positive actions. The spirit of the award is to publicly recognize these individuals and their contributions. Nomination forms are available at City Hall or on the city's website at www.cityofmountclemens.com. Many various events are scheduled throughout December to celebrate the holiday at the Crockery House Museum, Anton Art Center, and downtown. Please check the city's website or join us on Facebook for more event information.
Any questions? Okay. Commissioner, comments? Commissioner Mensah?
Okay. So, Thursday, December 7th, I think we should all take a moment to remember the Pearl Harbor Day and to say a prayer for the 2,403 military members who died that day and the 1,178 who were injured. We must never forget the sacrifices that our military men and women have made to sustain our liberty and freedom. I would like to thank State Representative Bill Sauerbe for coming today, keeping us informed. And I would encourage residents to visit his coffee cafes, coffee talks, because they're always very informative and, and you will have a chance to talk directly with them one-on-one. So, the Anton Art Center has their Silver Bells Christmas Market going on. And I walked, I went in there the other day and I, I bought a painting. And I really liked it. But the artist had done two, right? So, I bought one. But then I went home and I thought about the other one, and I thought about the other one. And so, the next day, I had to go back and buy it. You know how that works? So, I would encourage you all to visit the Anton Art Center Silver Bells Market. There are, is some really phenomenal artwork by our local residents. And Jeff Jantsch has a display of his children's book, Gruel Snarl Draws a Wild Zuck Thing. It's a green, one-eyed character that the kids love. The Little Free Libraries Project for the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, we will be installing completed book, you know, little libraries at Seminole Elementary in King. We have found, you know, got approval and locations at each place, so they should be installed shortly. And then, we will be installing in the other six parks. So, if you still have children's books at home, please, you know, get them to the city, get them to, I'm sure Ms. Weiss would accept them, or Mayor Dempsey, and get them to the Optimist Club. I wanted to let you know that there is a free pancake breakfast at the Clinton McComb Public Library, South Branch, on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 in support of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 154. They would like you to bring in some non-perishable food or a monetary donation. Or, and they're especially looking for clothing for children. They're looking for hats, scarves, and gloves. Although this is in Clinton Township, they are our neighboring community. And we have veterans in, in Mount Clemens that belong to the VVA 154 and also belong to our AMVETS right across the street here. So, it would be really nice if we could support our veterans, especially when you consider the fact that Pearl Harbor Day is two days prior. I would like to say, Ken Kitch, where are you? He's been under the weather and I would like to welcome him back and, and, and see him at City Commission. And in keeping with my tradition, I'm going to tell you where I've been in the city of Mount Clemens because I think it's incumbent on all of us to support our local businesses. So, I've been to O'Halloran's several times and I cannot stay away from either their tuna sliders or their poutine. And I curse you, Paul Boone, for the two-pound gain, you know, I've had. I've been to Bath City. I've been to Taco, Paco's Tacos. I have been to The Loft. As you, people might know that they have closed and become an online store. But I bought several posters. I mentioned that before. But I went back and bought a very nice painting about the Vietnam War in, you know, in Washington. I've been, of course, to the Anton Art Center. I've been to Gumbo's, again, for their mac and cheese and their cornbread. I stopped into Paperback Writers, Three Blind Mice, and Rec Bowl. So, that's where I've been in the city this past month. And again, as you notice, my thing is food because I'm a really terrible cook. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
I'd like to thank Mr. Sauerbe for his presentation. But first of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Hill. You're going to be missed. That's it.
Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you. I would also like to congratulate Commissioner, or now, previous Commissioner Hill, on the proclamation today. I, as the new member of this commission, I only hope that I can serve with the level of professionalism, interest, dedication that you did. You were a wonderful role model and I thank you for all your years of service here. And, Mr. Wood, I want to thank you for that extra week so we can, I'll go shake a few, a couple trees and see if I can get them all down. I don't know that one week is going to do it. But I definitely need that extra week. And thank you, Mr. Sauerbe. I hope you will take that insurance issue back, though, because Mount Clemens has high insurance rate, car insurance rates. My sister just moved here from Algenack and it was very depressing to see how much her, her insurance rates went up by moving into Mount Clemens. So, we really do need to do something about this issue as a state, for the state of Michigan. And finally, I see my friends from 205, regarding the 205 Washington project. It's been a project. You know, this has been to the Planning Commission several times. And I was on the Planning Commission prior to joining the City Commission. And then I've seen it here at the City Commission. And it was a very difficult issue because if you've ever been over to this area of Mount Clemens, it's a great neighborhood, wonderful neighborhood. And here, these people have kept up their properties. It's, it's, you know, it's residential, one-family homes. And in the midst of it all, there's this little plot of land with the yellow church on it. And it's zoned industrial. And it's, you know, you, I guess when you buy a house around there, you wouldn't think to check in case there is any lot around you that's owned industrial. But I really felt bad for both sides of this situation because you had someone who bought the property, who had a certain zoning, and so decided to develop it. But you had residents on the other side who didn't want an industrial-type building there or a multifamily apartments. And watching this whole situation, I would really encourage our, and I would be happy to work with anyone on the Planning Commission or on the zoning commission, to look for these types of issues, these plots of land that are stuck in neighborhoods that need to have, have a look at what the zoning is before it becomes an issue like it did for 205. So, I, I brought this up on the Planning Commission and I want to still follow through on it here so that we don't have, it all worked out and I hope it will continue to work out. We'll all be watching. But I hope that we can look at where this might be a problem elsewhere in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
Okay. I would also like to thank William Sauerbe for coming in and for informing us of what's going on. And I hope you plan to do that on a regular basis, as often as possible. Thank you. Commissioner Hill, or ex-Commissioner Hill, whatever. I'm going to still call you Commissioner Hill. Thank you for all your service and you've, you've been a great role model for others to follow. So, no matter that you're absent from us, your presence is always going to be with us and the fact that you were quite a person to set examples. So, thank you. About our things to celebrate this month, of course, as was mentioned, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day is on December 7th. December 9th is Anti-Corruption Day. Can you picture that in this country? I'm sorry. Moving on. December 10th is Human Rights Day. Picture that one. And then, on December 12th, this is the start of Hanukkah. So, you know, there's a few things that we can celebrate this, this, before we get to the real Christmas season and all the other celebrations, these are things that you can consider. I'd like to bring to your attention the fact that there's a free Narcan family program provided by Clinton Counseling Center Jail Program at Two Crocker Boulevard, Mount Clemens, Michigan, of course. And it's about providing free Narcan to people who have to deal or could, may have to deal with overdoses. You get a free Narcan kit, Narcan kit, overdose prevention training, which recognize and respond and to rescue people who are under that kind of condition. And you have community resources for ongoing help. And this will take place, it only takes a half an hour, from 7:30 to 8:00 PM. And the dates for this is January 9th, 16, and 23, February 6th, 13, and 20, March 6th, 13, and 20. Those dates are available. Again, the, the phone number for that is 586-307-9570. They also have programs for people who have businesses and for other facilities. And it's, it's called N O P E, Narcan Overdose Prevention Education. That is a different phone number and that's 586-307-9463. And both of those will put you in touch with the people who operate this. You get a free Narcan kit, a free nitral glove, I have no idea what that is. But anyway, a free rescue breathing mask, a free medication safety training. And you have, again, some information such as drug overdose is now the leading cause of accidental death in the United States. Every day, about 91 Americans die from an opiate overdose. Two million people in the United States are addicted to prescription opiates. Drug overdose deaths have quadrupled in Michigan. So, this is a thing that can be taken very seriously. You can get trained for home use. Again, that's January 9th, 16, and 23, February 6th, 13, and 20, March 6th, 13, and 20. And the number, again, for that one, that is, the free training is 586-307-9570. And for our Commissioner Wisdom, smart is when you believe only half of what you hear. Brilliant is when you know which half to believe. And that's O'Brien's Current Comedies. And as I've been giving you before, I keep on going with George Carlin paradoxes of, paradoxes of our time. In other words, life contradictions. There are times of fast foods and slow digestions. There are times where big men and small characters exist. And these are times also where fancier houses, but we have broken homes. Something to think about. And with that, we'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Krab?
I, too, would like to extend my thanks to Commissioner Hill. She, it was very nice sitting next to you and working with you for the almost two years that I was able to be on the commission with you. You, I really enjoyed your thoughtfulness. I felt like you really worked very hard to spend a lot of time making sure that you were researching all you could to, to make sure that you were voting the way you knew a constituents and how to represent Mount Clemens well. So, I, I'll remember that and take that with me along the, along the journey. I'd like to thank Bill Sauerbe as well for coming in. It's always good to hear the other, what's happening in Lansing and hopefully, we'll have some good news on roads funding. Thank you, Mr. Wood, for an extra week for the cleanup. My husband will probably curse a little less our giant tree in the front yard that doesn't seem to want to let go of summer, like the crops, because we were up at our cottage this weekend on the boat cursing that it was freezing. I would like to extend some information about the Anton Art Center Christmas Market. It's open from 10 to 5 every day. Please make sure that you go in. And if you have somebody difficult to buy for, my husband is pretty much impossible to buy for. He tells you he wants a box of nothing if you ask him. So, I went in and struck a home run and got a, got a gift, which I, of course, will not tell you because if he watches the video, then he'll know. But, yeah, difficult people because they're really unique gift offerings at a reasonable price as well. So, go check that out. I have coffee talks this week, oh, sorry, next week, December 12th and December 16th, a Tuesday and a Saturday, both at 9:30 AM at John's Family Grill. If you're interested in hearing about current topics of Mount Clemens or have questions, please feel free to join me. Of course, I invite all of my other commissioners, Mayor Dempsey, any of the city staff that'd like to join me. That would be great. And, of course, it is the time of lots of buying of gifts and things. And of course, go to the Christmas market. But there are stores in our downtown and in our city limits that you can find great gifts to buy for your loved ones. And don't forget, while you're rushing around and can't make dinner, not that I would ever do that, you can, of course, go to any of our great restaurants that are in Mount Clemens. And we are, of course, frequent visitors of those, the Krab household. The boys are also addicted to the poutine. So, it's bad. Anyway, so, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Everything's been said. Mr. Sauerbe, thank you. Mr. Woods for the leaves. And lastly, Lois, I sat next to you for 10 years and it did go by in a blink and you will be missed. So, that's it. Thank you.
And you know how I feel. Everything's been said, right? Thank you, Mr. Sauerbe. Please come back often. Keep us informed. And we don't necessarily have to wait until you come back. You're reachable. And if you- Thank you, Mr. Sauerby. Please come back often. Keep us informed. And we don't necessarily have to wait until you come back. You're reachable. And if you have any questions on things that are coming up, we're always getting emails with bills that are popping up. And I encourage you to let Mr. Sauerby know your feelings on some of these bills. That's the only way he's going to know how to represent his constituents. So please do that. Lois, thank you for your years of service. You did well, very well, from the standpoint that I think you have a lot of people that look up to you as a role model. And with this busy season that we have, and everybody's shopping and eating out and running around and buying gifts, please remember the unfortunate people out there that we do have. When you see those bell ringers from Salvation Army, drop some money in there because it's a great cause, and they do a lot of good for this community. And I know there's a lot of different areas, different people, different groups that are collecting. Please seek it out and help those that need the help the most during this season. So thank you. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Support? All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?